Let's see.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education Regular Business Meeting and Workshop Meeting. Would you all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you all. Sue Casey will be joining momentarily and as will Linda Diagardi. So we are going to jump in and welcome them when they arrive. Before we begin, I do have a brief statement to share on behalf of the board. We join our colleagues across the county in advocating for a safe reopening of our schools. In order to do so, many districts are requesting that criteria be developed that is equitable and based on the safety of students and staff. Until the governor, the SED, CDC, New York State Department of Health, and the Monroe County Department of Health develop these metrics, we will continue instruction as is. These are the same entities who recommended the closure of schools and who are responsible for issuing guidance. Since the onset of the pandemic, our district leadership has worked closely with other Monroe County superintendents and Dr. Mendoza of the Monroe County Health Department. We will continue to do so. Also, a brief reminder that our webpage is launched on the district's website under Board of Education. It contains an abundance of information in an effort to relay board work in a very accessible way. Board of Education meetings have been live via Zoom and livestreamed since the onset of the pandemic and can be found on our webpage under our work. Additionally, we have promoted that community members who request speaking time can request a Zoom link from Cindy Cushman, and it will be livestreamed as well. We will be in person when it is safe to do so. Just as many community members have younger and older family members to protect, so do members of the board and district leadership. It is our duty to set the safety and security of our students and staff as our highest priority. We appreciate everyone's tolerance and understanding. Thank you very much. Now, as we move into regular business, Brian Freeman will lead us through the tax cap and governor's state aid update. Thank you, Brian. There's Linda and Sue.
Thank you. Let me share my screen. All right, can everybody see the Excel spreadsheet? So this is our first blush at the tax cap for 2020-21. Excuse me, I'm sorry, for 21-22. Let's do this in real time. We'll do, since we love Google and we could do this. Had the wrong dates up there. So we're looking at 21-22 and what's the early estimates, what the draft is going to look like. I'll just highlight a few things, a part of the formula for you. So if you, first thing you notice, our starting part of the formula is what we have as our levy from this current year, 2020-21. And you notice it was different than what our cap was last year. Because every year, we reduce that down by the re-levis. We get those every June. So our starting amount for the tax cap is less than what the ending amount was last year, and that cycle repeats itself every year. So next, our tax-based growth factor, that came out in late November, early December. This is pretty much a year-over-year change of the assessment growth in in the district. So you saw it was 1.3, it's 1.17 this year. And over here, I calculated for you, it's about $100,000 difference between the two years of what that percentage difference does in the formula. So as you're working your way through the formula, you have your pilots that get included. Our pilots haven't changed, they stay relatively stable. I think we have a new one we just got notified on, but that won't come into effect for at least another year because construction is happening right now. So that won't come on board, so I don't project any changes there. So you see what's on the top of the formula also matches the bottom. No changes there. So we get our subtotal, you see the mathematical formula there to, brings us to 113.5 million. The next major part is the capital levy. So the top part of this year's formula is a mirror of what last year was. So our capital exclusions, and I'll break that down on the next sheet for you in a little bit more detail. That is pretty much all of our debt that we do for bus borrowings and for capital projects, minus all of the aid we get. What's left over gets excluded. Okay. And then on the formula, that gets subtracted at the top part, subtracting that capital levy, and then multiplying by what everybody says is the tax cap. This is, when you think tax cap, everybody thinks it's the CPI. Last year is 1.81, this year it's 1.23%. So when you say, oh, your tax cap's only 1.23, they're really referencing the CPI part. And as you can see, it's one part of this multi-stepped formula. And then over here, I did the math just to kind of show you the difference between two years of what a 1.81 and a 1.23 does. You could see there's a little bit of a difference in how much can go into the formula. Then you subtract out your pilots again. You get your property tax levy limit before exclusions. Tax levy necessary to, for expenditures for tort orders and judgments, that is very, very, very unique. I have never seen it done, and that's only if a district is getting sued for any amount that could possibly be 5% or more than their total levy. So it's very rare, doesn't happen that I've ever heard of. And then our capital tax levy for next year, what's changing? What's happening? You can see it jumps, and I'll get into the difference why it's jumping. And you'll see, it's really a lot has to do with our BOSI's project. And we'll break that down a little bit. So our tax levy limit plus exclusions takes us to 115,520,076, so 3.99%. So this is the first blush, first draft. We have up until a couple months to make adjustments because things are changing with the state. And so this number could change throughout the process, and I'll take you through how that happens. So on the capital exclusion side, you could see how those work. This 3 million is really building debt service, bus debt service, taking the aid that we're getting for building aid, aid for transportation. What do those add up to be? What's left over? So you see, that's where that number comes from, 3.1. So then we project out for next year, what's going to happen? Well, we have a couple nuanced changes that I wanted to break out for. So we have our debt service going up, excuse me, a little bit more. We have more of the capital project completed. So you're seeing that go up. Then we have our bus come, going up a little bit as well. But then we have all this BOSI's capital debt because the BOSI's project, and you could see, I broke that out over here. The BOSI's capital project that was approved, what, about a year and a half ago now, by the component districts. And then we have our transfer $100,000 project. So that's what makes up our debt. So you see the increase there. Then we have aid to go with it. This is the number right here that's probably going to change and will probably bring our levy down. Right now, what I did was that $7.8 million in building aid came right off the governor's run. So I just plugged it in. That will change probably in the next four weeks when we get more information of what our building aid really is going to be. Because we just submitted some final paperwork, we're just waiting to see if they actually are going to count it for next year, if it's, if it's going to be included in the runs. So I imagine it's going to be, so this number will change, which will then drive this number down. But for right now, this is what matches up to what the governor projected. So that's what I'm putting there. Then we are doing a estimate on what our aid will be for transportation. As you can see, our aid ratio last year was 71.3%. That's going down to 70.9, so a small loss there. So we're losing a little transportation aid. And then the BOSI's, what's going on there, how much aid we're getting there. So that's our cost of the project right here, 2.775 rent capital. The second payment is coming due. What our aid will be is this 1.683. So we add that to it. So pretty much the difference between our debt, all those aids that I just went over, gets us the total exclusions. So you can see, there's a rather large difference. The aid in BOSI's last year was 599,000. Now it's all the way up to 1.6. We had the cost last year, 1.2. It's just about 2.8. So the project, since we're paying the largest share, gives us the largest local share. So that's increased our exemption further because of that BOSI's project and what we're on the hook for. Lot of details, lot of intricacies, but I wanted to take you through the formula, show you what these inner workings are. Like I said, I predict, 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 excuse me, that it will come down once we get those final building aid numbers from the state. But right now, this is our first draft of where we're going to be on the tax levy limit for next year. Any questions? Anything? Want to go over in more detail?
Yeah. Brian, the only question I have is, is back on the previous page, you were looking at the, at the transportation aid, and the amount from last year to this year is only minimally different. Has anything, do we know, have any new information about some of the transportation costs we incurred that the state was saying we couldn't be reimbursed for?
Nothing at this time. It's just a hold in place with that. And I'll get into that a little bit more when I go over the state aid. But it's, that's such a tough one. You know, it sounded good when the governor and state came out with that. Oh, yeah, we shouldn't have to pay you aid for all those expenses. But the actual mechanism from unwinding all those expenses from how we do the state reporting in the fall is, is really, really difficult. So they haven't come up with any kind of system for us to say, all right, from March till June, how much of your salaries are, you know, no longer reportable? How much are those bus repairs no longer reportable? Because, you know, in essence, we're still repairing buses because they had to be road-ready. DOT was coming out twice a week still. So, you know, if they said repair something for, to keep that bus road-ready, we had to do it. So how do you unwind the difference between that and, you know, are you not going to pay for the normal maintenance that was occurring? So, yes, we're just holding in place on that.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, just a comment, you know, and I don't know where we'll finally end up, but 4% increase in the tax levy seems a lot for people to absorb after COVID impacted a lot of people in 2020. I don't know if that's where we're going to ultimately end up, but that just seems, I know that's how the numbers show up, and that might not be what our budget increases, but that just seems on the surface a lot.
Yeah, and this is, you know, this is the levy, it's not the rate. The rate that we set will be different. Yep. Every year it varies. Like last year, the rate increase for Walworth in Ontario were 6 and I think 8% off the top of my head because their equalization rates changed by 8%. We have nothing to, you know, this is the only portion of the three-part formula of the tax, tax rate scenario that we can, we control. And, you know, we obviously don't control too much of it because it's pretty formulaic. The only part, you know, at the end that we do, you know, is the final number. But rate, what actual shows up on a tax bill has a lot more to go than just this right here. This is a third of it. We still have 2/3 to go in the summertime to see what that's going to land at.
And, and Mike, we'll keep you updated over through the month of March as we go through staffing and program costs and such. But this is just like, yeah, so it's not about the rates. This is just that, that levy. So, because we're not going to go out with a 4% tax rate increase, put it that way, that, you know. But we'll keep you apprised throughout March.
Right. And there isn't, and Mike, it's not a one-to-one, like the levy increase doesn't, doesn't mean the budget's going to go up 3.99. They're two separate exercises.
Right. I understand you guys are doing your budgeting right now in zero-based and trying to roll it up and, and look at opportunities. So then I get that. I was just surprised that the tax levy component was as high as it was.
Um, yeah, we're probably in the top third because of two reasons. One is, we're paid right now on the east side of Monroe County, we by far have the largest exemption when it comes to the, the BOSI's capital project. So when you look at us compared to the other districts, our exemption is going to be much larger. Ideally, what we like to do is be uniform from year to year with consistent capital expenditures. So there is, you know, stability from year to year. So you got that. But also, we actually have a tax-based growth factor. A lot of the other districts do not, you know, they're not getting that added to their formula. Many of them are flat. So, you know, our, we're, we're able to capture that assessment growth as part of the formula that other districts can't.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? No, this is for information only. So we know we'll revisit this again.
Yep, in the, yeah, in March, we'll have a much more honed in, in, in final levy amount. The, the, the building aid one is that's, is the most important. Getting that number squared away and getting that accurate as of right now.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Moving on to the Treasures Report, November 2020.
Tammy, there's just a little bit, I was going to go over our budget numbers from the governor to real quick.
Okay.
So, just to show you some, some things of what the governor's budget was calling for and how that impacts Webster. So, right now, the governor's budget is, you know, he's, it looks like overall it's an increase for school aids, but it's really not. It's really a $1.35 billion reduction. And it really depends on the, what is the CHRISA or Second Care's that came out in December of $3.8 billion from the federal government. So that's a huge part of what this budget is built on. So it looks like we're flat, but we're really not because it's all based on federal aid. Several changes that are, you know, worrisome is to combine all the services aids, what he calls service aids, BOSI's, software, library, textbook, hardware, all combined into one. Now, those are all based on student enrollment or what we spend. So we bought something at BOSI's, we get aid. We, we buy hardware, we get aid. Textbook, we get an allocation based on student enrollment. Going to, he wants to combine all those into one pot and then just kind of, you know, give it a flat. So transportation's another one that's included in this. All consolidated together. So if diesel goes to $5 a gallon, we would be capped. We don't get extra aid for price fluctuations, things like that. So it's kind of problematic, something we really want, don't want to see happen. So that's huge. And then just kind of take you down where our numbers have landed, because this is quite a change. And here is where in 2020-21, our final budget numbers of where we were. And I tried to do a one-for-one to unwind what the governor was proposing and make it fit what we used, what we did. So here's the governor's projection right here. And I'll just highlight it so it stands out a little bit more. Foundation aid is flat again. See, we actually went lower than this because we're back in last April, May, when we were putting the budget together during the pandemic. We're assuming aid cuts, so we took it from foundation aid. So this is our actual foundation aid number. It's staying flat again. Then you see the services aid. This 15 million is tied to these blue highlights here. BOSI's aid, transportation aid, hardware, technology, software, all these add to that 15 million. So when the governor is proposing that, that's where it comes from. You know, those are the aid categories that impact us that go into services aid. And so there's two things that show up on his report that we've never had before. One is STAR. So why is STAR all of a sudden on our, since 1997, STAR reimbursement has never showed up on a state aid run? Because it comes out of the Office of Real Property and Finance. It has nothing to do with state aid or SED. But now it's showing up on our state aid run because the funding adjustment was benchmarked to it. Now, there's a couple of different theories. Why is it benchmarked to it for this gap? In essence, a new gap elimination adjustment. Where's the 7.9 come from? So it works out in the favor of the big five using STAR as a benchmark because they don't have high STAR. So they get the second calculation, which gives them more of the funding from the, the CHRISA relief. So it makes it look like we have a lot more aid than we really do. Because that STAR is, is over, it brings it up to a, to a amount we've never seen on a state aid run. And so then I just took you through, okay, so the governor's methodology for 2021. Here's what we had. If I unwind what the governor is doing, where do those numbers come from? This is all on the output report, showing you the difference because, you know, we had the pandemic adjustment, that goes away. So carrying it all the way to the right-hand column, the governor's proposed services aid is still based off of these BOSI's aid, transportation aid, these numbers that are based on September projections. So September projections are not always accurate. So we know this number with the governor is not always going to be accurate. So you see the STAR payment that he's projecting again, which is different than this year's STAR payment. It goes down every year. Anyone that's bought a home in the last five to six years realizes you lose the rebate off your bill, you get a check at the end of September now. This is a fun state moving the shell game around by not giving us the money through reimbursement. It is actually a reduction in expense for them on their books. And when they write the check, they write it out of a revenue account. So it's a reduction in revenue. So it makes it look like they're holding the line on spending. So it's interesting that that's there. And then really, it's money in, money out, he's projecting for us. The 7.9 million that we're losing is really just being offset by the COVID stimulus, the CHRISA money. So that's where we landed, you know, somewhat neutral on the governor's numbers. You know, like you said, transportation aid, Sue, you brought that up. Not sure what's going to happen with those. I know there's a lot of things coming out now that the governor's office in the Division Budget said, schools will be made whole for the 20% withholding that they've been doing since the end of last year. We don't know when that's going to happen. For us, that could be this fiscal year or it could be next fiscal year. Because the state, they say by March, but we'll know that's our big aid payment. We'll know at the end of March if we're going to be made whole or not. A couple other state proposals that are, want to take a look at, special education aid. State wants to eliminate their responsibility for some special education placements in residential schools. So we'd have to pick up the tab on that difference. Right now, we're at 38%. It would move to 57%. STAR changes. So this is one, we've already put a link out on our website. So anytime you move from basic to enhanced, so our seniors will automatically lose the exemption and be put into the credit on the check in September. So that's something that would need to get messaged out there under the governor's proposals. STAR used to be about 15% on the tax levy. Six years ago, when I started, STAR made up 15%. This year, in 2021, it's 9.5%. The other thing to watch for is the STAR changes is really setting up what I think is a backdoor tax by tying it to state education aid. Because if this year, it comes and looks like state aid, when the COVID stimulus goes away, STAR can go away because it's now benchmarked to the COVID stimulus. So it's extra aid. It's not a STAR payment in a year that goes away. It's state aid that goes away. So it's a way that could be a backdoor tax without people really realizing it down the road. And then prior year aid claims, as part of the proposal was to discontinue any prior year aid claims that districts are owed, would eliminate it in its entirety. And Webster were owed $840,000 in prior aid claims going back 15 years that we're looking for. So that's a quick nutshell of what the governor's proposal for us is. You know, any questions?
Brian, just to clarify, that 7.97 million is the act that passed back in December, correct? And there's nothing in here for the potential 1.9 trillion stimulus?
No. The 7.9 is, is hooked to the CHRISA funding.
So do the governor's office give any indication if they get this big boatload of money in the, the next stimulus one?
Yeah, nothing, nothing, no.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, is there any way to estimate, or how do you think about the services aid next year when we don't really have an accurate baseline for this year?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm, I think it's, you know, like last year, it was a red herring that was thrown in there and was, you know, the legislature didn't agree to it and kept it separate. I think it's there again, and I think it's used to distract people from the STAR and that long-term program. That's, that's just my, you know, inkling of watching how the numbers are falling.
Okay, well, sobering news for sure. Are there any other questions? Anybody have any feedback? Okay. We will be coming back to this again. Thank you, Brian.
Yep, we'll keep, as information gets updated, we'll keep bringing it back to you guys.
Okay, okay. Appreciate it. And now moving on to the November and December 2020 Treasures Report.
I, pretty straightforward. If you guys have any questions, I have the executive summaries there for you. Let me know.
Sorry, Brian, one question. School lunches, are we getting, I thought those were being paid for by the federal government now?
They are, but it's on a delay. So for cash flow purposes, we're still floating them loans until the feds come through with the money.
Got it.
Usually it's on a three-month delay right now.
Have we gotten any money from the feds yet?
We have, we had two payments.
Okay.
Anything further? Anyone else? Can we have a motion, please, then, to accept the Treasures Report as presented?
So move them.
Second.
By Mike Alt, second by Sef. Thank you. By Mike Alt, second by Saff, thank you. And moving on again to the treasure bid work resolution that had been postponed.
Sure, so what you have in front of you is, you know, a resolution to accept mechanical, electrical and plumbing as outlined, those lowest responsible bidders. And then to reject all the general construction bids. And, you know, as part of the de-scoping process, when we meet with all the contractors that are the lowest responsible, we always look at what we could do better, look at areas. And actually, the bids came in lower, so when we looked at what we could do or add, we saw the opportunity that, hey, we could actually add a few things to the general construction contract. Some more asbestos abatement in the house offices and new flooring. So we took a look at that and, you know, worked with the general contractor that had the lowest bid and saw some areas for improvement after talking through them. You know, to call some things out, to to change a couple of things. So what we're asking the Board of Education do is to accept the electrical, plumbing and mechanic bid, yet then reject any and all bids for general construction. And then we're going to go back out tomorrow with an advertisement to rebid the general construction for Schrader, and then we'll have those opened in March and have the board award the lowest responsible bid, then with the changes and things we're adding to the package.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions about the changes to the Schrader bid resolution? Okay, then, can we please have a motion to accept the Schrader bid change resolution as presented? By Sue, second by Saff, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. And finally, moving on to the pandemic plan. Brian, if you could walk us through this.
Uh, this is just a housekeeping, this is an addendum to our overall safety planning. Just had to plan for a pandemic, and so this is our, you see, our addendum to the safety plan. We're going to put that out there for 30 days for public comment, pretty straightforward in answering, in essence, a series of questions that the law set out that we have to identify. So we've done that and we'll go forward from there.
Hey, are there any questions or feedback around the pandemic plan? Okay, can we have a motion, please, then to accept as presented? By Sue, second by Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
That concludes the business portion of the meeting. And with that, we will move into a workshop.